Thank you and welcome. Roll call, please.
President Peng.
Here.
Vice President Romano.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Present.
Mr. Bural Patel.
As long as Mohan says "I'm present."
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Acts, Chapter 231 PL 1975, we're joined to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, personnel matters, health insurance contract dispute, former staff and students litigation, superintendent's contract, and ETA agreement. So we're joined to a privileged session.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you in a bit.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
This motion by Mohan. Second. Thank you. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes, with the note that I expect A-plus grade in your next year. No A, A-plus.
You got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
I'm abstaining based on a conversation we had in closed session.
Mr. Bural Patel.
Proudly yes for the rock star.
Was that you in the article?
Yeah, that was it. Rock star, yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Absolutely yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Ms. Peng, do you mind if I make a few comments right now? We're going to go a little bit out of order on the agenda currently right now, but I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks for this board who's put their trust in me to lead this district over the course of the term of this contract. I am humbled. It is a privilege to work in this district each and every day. I consider myself fortunate. I have many people to thank for that as well, too, from the individual that actually recruited me to come here, Dr. Bragan, to the support staff that I have around me, to my mother who's in the audience right now tonight. To my wife who's watching from Boca Raton, hopefully hasn't been sleeping, I hope she's still awake right now, and to my boys who told me that they were watching that are most likely lying and playing video games. I will tell you, listen, this isn't an individualized effort. The team that surrounds me is second to none, the entire central office staff, from everybody. And I look forward to working alongside of you each and every day. I would be remiss if I would fail to mention our Board of Education, Mr. Toth, our administrators who are extremely supportive and where the rubber meets the road, and that's our staff, that's our teaching staff who are with our kids each and every day, and define our purpose here, right, which is student achievement. It's providing the best experience for our kids each and every single day. And you have my commitment that I will deliver an A-plus grade and I will take this district exactly where it should be. So I do thank you for that.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to read the board goals for next year. Oh, yeah, yeah. You want to go to press?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah. So it's actually a great segue into that currently right now. So in July, we had our board retreat and our board goals currently right now, which is a process that I thought was extremely productive at that time. So the Board of Education got together. We had a great opening session. We had some bonding pieces where we all shared out not only what our expectations were, but also some of the highlights that we celebrate both professionally and personally. We had unbelievable, robust discussions at that time. We had a lot of laughs as well, too, and some great debates also. As you can kind of see right there, you can see our business administrator who's always animated and navigating the discussion right there. But at the end of the day, after we all developed these goals collaboratively, and I do believe that, we actually put them through a pretty rigorous exercise, we landed on something that I think that as a district, we can be all proud of from a board perspective, right? So the board is committed to the following goals right now: ensuring all stakeholders take ownership and accountability of the student experience; that we support innovative professional development for all of our staff, which is driven by the modernization of education; that we support the highest levels of student achievement, which is our single and most important, and in my opinion, only purpose; and to improve community engagement and communications along those lines. And from these goals, what we will do is we will develop more specific district goals that we'll develop with our central office team as well as our administrators. We have a bunch of meetings that are coming up that will assist us in this process. Note, goal can be developed without the collaborative analysis of data, which as schools, we are data-rich, and I think that we need to establish collaborative protocols so that we're all looking at data from the same lens. And we all bring a level of expertise to that also. So we're actually looking forward to this process because one of the hallmarks of great leadership is that we speak optimistically about the goals, mission, and vision of the future. In the absence of those, we don't know what our purpose for the organization is. So right now, I think we've laid the groundwork, and this body is committed to the groundwork, I can assure you. And it's my job to be the steward of their vision and to assist the talented staff that we have here in making all of those become a reality. So I couldn't be prouder of that process. So I do thank you for everybody's participation in there. It was a great day. I don't know if any board member wants to add a comment to that or...
Sure. You know, I like to talk. Thank you. No, actually, that process was amazing and you drove it very well. Someone that has issues with some people, we got rid of them, and everyone was laughing and enjoying it and coming together to make the right decisions for our students and our staff and our district. And like I said, we're going to put students first all the time, and that's our main goal. And then we want to make sure that everything stems and everyone works towards that goal. So thank you for doing that. We say we're going to do more of those.
Yeah, it was a great exercise.
Absolutely.
Next time in the park.
Yeah.
Mo, you were absolutely correct. You know, I felt it was the first time us as a board had a good time. We were able to sit down, put our minds together, and come up with some great goals for our kids. My question to you is, Eddie, like, yeah, you need to set up more of those things.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think it worked. I think that was that day we all got together.
We're going to put the administrators through a similar exercise with regards to that, too, as we develop the district goals collaboratively. It's a larger group, so you know, what I planned in my head probably may not work in actuality, but at the end of the day, I think we'll have a robust set of district goals that are...
And the cool thing was their names are picked from a hat. So we had to work with individuals that we normally didn't work with. So I thought the exercise, it was a great exercise.
I suggested that, too.
You did. You definitely did.
Yes, you did.
Definitely did. Definitely did.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, that was a great meeting, Eddie. I'm going to just read the goals then, right now. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent of the school, the Edison Township Board of Education approves the following board goals for the 2023-2024 school year: ensure all stakeholders take ownership and accountability of the student's experience; support innovative professional development driven by the modernization of education; support the highest level of student achievement; improve community engagement and communications. Now, do I have a motion to approve the board goals?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
There was a motion by Mr. Schneider, second by Mr. Shi. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Absolutely.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Peng.
Okay, yes.
We've got goals.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Dr. Eldarelli, Parent Academy.
Great. So one of our last goals was the improvement of communication and engagement amongst the community. Currently, that's actually one of the things that this board has tasked me with, is, you know, to open lines of communication, to keep parents, to keep teachers, and students apprised to all the great things that are going on here in Edison. You know, and not only from board objectives and, you know, mission and vision, but details, too, right? Parents like to be apprised of what's going on from a district perspective also, and that's one of the tasks that we did. Also, when you came in today, you saw all of the different projects, the construction projects that we currently have underway, as well as the enhancements that we have to our school. We've been extremely busy this summer. So we're looking to do more of these at every single board meeting. We're going to highlight this as part of our YouTube component as well. And I think it's time that we start celebrating our successes here and telling the story of how great Edison is. And this is really a great segue into it. It's in the development of what's called a District-wide Parent Academy. We have a brief video presentation, which I'm going to ask them to play in the beginning, but I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the people that have worked really hard on this, which begins with Dr. Brevier, who's the principal of Ben Franklin Elementary School. We have Dr. Valentine over at JAMS. We have Dr. Falco, who's our vice principal at Thomas Jefferson. We have Ms. Halpin, who is one of our supervisors, along with Mr. Ladd, Nirav, and Ms. Laura Wessel-Darrow, who's also one of our VPs, under the tutelage of Ms. Mahabir currently, who's been working with this group. Our goal with this academy is really to provide a forum that we can learn with and alongside of and from our parents and our staff members. Research will show, number one, that the student experience and student achievement accelerates when there is a partnership between home and the community. And I'm not just talking newsletters that get published, I'm talking actual boots on the ground. When they're involved in the learning process, research will show that student achievement is bountiful. It is exponential. And one of the things I think we could do a little bit better here is providing them with opportunities. Learn from some of the experts we have within our community, who's very talented, to provide seminars and workshops, and also provide parents with some of those seminars and workshops from our professional staff, right? Like how to help your student with homework or deal with some of the new mathematics traits that we do, how to read, how to manage student behavior, or how to manage finances moving forward into college, right? College and career readiness. We have experts within our community. We need to tap into those pieces. We need to formulate partnerships, robust partnerships, with members of our community. So this Parent Academy is really the first step in that process. And I'd like to congratulate the committee that put this together, along with Dr. Brevier. So Pat, if you wouldn't mind playing this. Great. So I just want to congratulate the members of the Communication Committee for supporting this endeavor currently, right now. And as you can kind of see on the screen, you know, our vision and our mission for this is providing learning opportunities for parents alongside us, to establish that connection and partnership. You can see that we branded this year "Learn, Live, and Lead Well," right? And those themes will be focused specifically around what interests and what needs do our parents have. We're going to survey moms and dads and guardians, and we're also going to survey teacher leaders to find out what are some of the areas that we can improve upon within our communications, which will eventually lead to some student surveys as well also. We're going to provide tools and resources to support our children's learning inside and outside of schools. Mindfulness and student anxiety is a real thing. It's going to be the February piece that we're going to focus on, right? How we alleviate those, right? Kids are under a lot of pressure, you know, both academically and socially, so we want to make sure that we're providing a balance of that, right? Rigorous academics, but at the same time, you know, autonomy to work at their own pace and not be so stressed out from the day-to-day of being a student and a kid. And finally, you know, prepare them for the challenges of an ever-involving world, right? The hallmark of innovation and ever-changing global society. So our target dates are kind of set, and we figured three would be a good starting point from kind of an idealistic standpoint. And as the university and the academy grows, hopefully, we'll be able to provide more opportunities for partnerships. And, you know, those might include town halls with the superintendent or, you know, a meeting with the building principal. From a district perspective, we've got a lot of talents here. It's a great endeavor that's going to ultimately benefit our kids and our families. So I thank you for your support in that.
Thank you, Dr. Eldarelli.
Thank you.
I think we'll do board member comments right now. Any board members want to make a comment? I... Okay. Mr. Bureau Patel.
Thank you. So everyone sees the dress code over here that few board members are hanging. That's courtesy board member Mohan Patel, who brought this for all of us on the occasion of India's Independence Day. And since he brought this for all of us, I will let him say more about it. So thank you, Mohan. So congratulations, Dr. Eldarelli. You know, everything that started come to fruition, so very well deserved. One of the very few days left for the vacation, so all the students, parents out there, enjoy the vacation. I often see people discussing about who is going to be the teacher, what's going to happen in the first week, so I tell everyone in the community to relax. You've got few days to enjoy with your kids, and then you'll have to study for 10 months anyways. So relax, especially in the elementary schools. I come across several parents, parent portal is not working. So what are you going to achieve really with having the parent portal start working tomorrow, right? Parent portal is down for maintenance for whoever is listening to this, and it goes through several iterations, as Ralph can vouch on that, and all the data gets feeded in, all the new classroom, and all the information gets in. It will be up on time, which like it is every single year, up on time, right? Until then, there's nothing to worry about. Not a single student will miss out on their grades or assignments or anything because it's summer vacation, and that's meant to enjoy, have fun. So I would urge everyone to enjoy the last few days. Whatever good weather we can get, we don't get that many good sunny, warm days these days. So whatever good weather days are, just enjoy, make the most out of it to every single student and parents, and, you know, gear up back for the, and to the teachers as well. So everyone has a lot of work to do, starting next year. We have wonderful things going on, as Dr. Eldarelli just showed in the presentation. So, you know, look forward to, by the time we have next board meeting, we'll have the schools already started. So look, Dr. Eldarelli, we look forward to a very smooth beginning of the school year. That has never happened in years in Edison School District, so let's hope for that.
Thank you. Me, too.
Thank you. So that being said, I have a question for you, Dr. Eldarelli.
Sure.
So give everyone a little summary. A lot of people reached out in a few days, saying, "What's going on with the school district? What are you doing as a board member? And what are the other board members doing? What are the administrators doing? What is superintendent doing? My property value went down." So I said, "Wait, wait, wait. I don't know your property value. What was it before?" So they go to site zillow.com and see their school's rating went down. So they say Menlo Park rating went down, Woodbrook rating went down, and Martin Luther King rating went down, all right? Now, here's the thing. I know how Woodbrook School is. Being a parent myself, it's one of the excellent schools in the whole state of New Jersey, in my opinion, right? So I don't believe, first of all, if I see a rating agency to tell us that school's rating went down. So I don't believe that rating agency. GreatSchools.org, I don't believe that, right? Personally, because I see the school, I see the teachers, I see the principal, I see the administrator, I see all the board members over here. Every one of us put a lot of efforts. I see superintendent, I see all the administrators over here. So none of us, nobody in the district, did any single thing to make the school ratings go down, right? The students, on top of it, did not do anything to make the school ratings go down. The students, in fact, did better. What I understand, I could be wrong, but one of the criteria I saw in that is student progress. The students have progressed already so much that there is nothing else to progress right now. So one of the big criteria they use and give weightage to is student progress. So students, if the students, majority of the students are already excellent in all the schools, then where do they go from here? Do we want to teach them by, like, you know, becoming a doctor in third grade, fourth grade, or middle school? So yes, there is always room for improvement. A lot of students can do better, and that's what the district works on around the year. All the teachers, all the administrators, everyone works on that, and we are doing wonderful things for that. So just to make it clear, I don't think we should go by GreatSchools.org rating and start panicking about property values or zillow.com and, "Is it concerning?" Yes, absolutely concerning, because if I were to buy a property in a town, I would look for those ratings. I would look for zillow.com, and I would see that. As a board member and as a one who is knowledgeable with these things, I would not look for that in Edison, because now I know the schools are great. So, Dr. Eldarelli, a task for you. What do we do about that? How do we solve that problem? Do we talk with great schools, or do we need to solve the problem?
Yeah, so, you know, listen, GreatSchools.org, they work on data that's available to them through the state, right? So we're not giving them... I believe that GreatSchools.org is probably pulling data from the year 21-22 at that time. They're usually a year behind. And, you know, as you remember during that year, that 21-22 was the year of the pandemic in which, you know, students and teachers were in for 14 days, right? Quarantined for 14 days if they were close contact, or in some cases, I think we were even up to 21 days. The staff can probably attest to that, right? And then restrictions lessened and lessened as, you know, vaccines and things became available, and, you know, we slowly and periodically, I think at some point, got to maybe five days during quarantine at that time. So the interruption to instruction was paramount at that time. It was at its highest point. So to utilize test data from that era of time is probably not the best indicator of student achievement, in my estimation, right? But I can tell you that we are held through a threshold here by the state of New Jersey about meeting adequate yearly progress and making sure that students perform. And I can assure you that Edison, as always, has been performing top-notch in each and every single one of our schools. There are some subgroups that we definitely need to address, right? Some areas where students can obviously grow, and the only way to do that is to look at data. The other piece that affects the student rating score is attendance, right? So not only does academics at that time, but when you're in and out of school, right? Attendance suffers also. So that rating about attendance rate also factors into GreatSchools.org. I would also say, I think it was probably the first year that third graders got tested at all, right? So after being not in school for over the course of a couple of years, right, being remote, and learning loss was evident, right, that they hadn't taken a standardized test. So it's our responsibility to close that achievement gap, right? And we actually talked a little bit about that as a group through some of the tutoring programs and Title I services that are available to us. We need to make sure that we're tapping into every avenue to make sure students are performing based on the standards, because that's what we're measured to. We are measured based on a student's learning across a standard, and that's the measure of academic process. And in certain grade levels, too, that's how teachers, it's part of their evaluation, right? It's a student score. It's scores that they set alongside of their building principal or their supervisor also. So there's many mechanisms that are put in place to student achievement, but I can definitely understand the concern, but what I would just encourage the people that, you know, would look at those, at results of that is, I wouldn't say take it with a grain of salt, because it is data, but there was definitely some external factors that were out of our control during that timeframe. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, absolutely. So how would we do this? What you suggested was excellent. Your points were excellent. So if we can put some communication out there on the website, which people can review all the, and, you know, we can keep adding to it, because this will keep coming up, because I don't think that rating is changing anytime in next one year. So every time someone new looks at it, oh my God, MLK is three, and Woodbrook is four, and Ben Franklin is two, and that's not, it doesn't reflect real rankings. So a page would be helpful.
Yeah, and our data comes out this year as well, too, based on the standardized assessments that were taken last year. So what we'll be able to do is do a comparative analysis between last year's scores and this year's scores, and I'm pretty confident that they'll demonstrate growth. So I think that'll be a good baseline in which we can, in which we can inform parents.
If I can add to that, I agree with whatever, you know, Mr. Bureau Patel said, but we are good, but we can be better, right?
Agreed.
And if you're winning the race, the race need to show that we are winning it, right? So maybe if we can do the due diligence to understand how they are rating it, and if they're missing the data, provide the data. And again, 12 months timeline, let's just not try to change it in one month, but same time next year, I expect our rating should be better, right? Based on what you just said, because it's older data.
Yes.
Or kids aren't in school for the last couple of years, right? So again, that's goal, another goal for you, or sub-goal for you to get there, right? This time next year, we should see the rating getting better.
And one of the things that we can champion, too, at, you know, is that a lot of the information is, well, all of it's publicly available, number one, but one of our board goals is parent communication, right? So we champion our successes. And where do you do it? You shout it from the mountaintop at Back to School Night. You celebrate the successes. That's really the only time you have a captive audience with everybody in the room, right? Or at least a grade level, depending upon, you know, the number of students that we have, right? So you celebrate those successes. You celebrate student achievement at that time.
But also what I'm trying to say...
And set goals, absolutely.
Work with great schools or whatever other ranking websites parents are looking at and see what they need, right? Maybe they're missing data. If it's just matter of providing the data and see if it changes anything.
Good, good point. If I could just, you know, break this conversation a little bit, too. I did my own research of that when the parents brought that up, and I saw the data was flawed and old, which is 100%, and it's like a Yelp rating. If you had a bad experience, you're going to rate it a one. If you had a great experience, you rate it a five. And when I saw the ratings, I saw there wasn't that many people that went out and voted, and you saw one stars, two stars, because they had some kind of issue with their kid and the school or whatever it was. So I wouldn't go crazy about that data, and I would tell the parents to relax and just enjoy your kid. Let them learn and give them the emotional encouragement that they need. They will do better on their own, honestly, if you just give them that much of an encouragement. Grades are important, but, you know, their happiness and learning process is more important. So that being said, we'll definitely look at more data. Send them our data, and I'm done talking about data, all right? But, all right, just to do my board member comment, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
A well choice, and we want to make sure that you're held accountable, like Vishal said, which I know you will do a great job. And I want to wish everybody that celebrates a happy Independence Day, 77th year for India's Independence Day, so therefore you see the festivity on our bodies right now. All right. Other than that, I'll add more later. Thank you.
Shannon.
Yeah, Ms. White.
Shannon, congratulations, Dr. Eldarelli.
Thank you.
You know how happy I am for you. I truly am. And I, there is no doubt in my mind that over this next year that we are going to just move light years. I mean, your programs are great, just alone this Parent Academy is going to just, you know, take off and, you know, things are just going to so improve. We have an amazing staff and amazing administrators. There's nothing that can hold us back from being better than we ever were. So I wish you well, and you have my support.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, yeah.
Thank you. As many know, both Virginia and I are recused from voting on Dr. Eldarelli, but we're not recused from praising him here. And really, this is my opportunity to just say thank you for your leadership in the interim role. And personally, as a parent, a taxpayer, forget being a board member. It is so wonderful that this board has entrusted you with this leadership position. you with this leadership position. And there's metrics, there's resumes, there's everything, but sometimes it's about gut, you know? And for some, something about my gut feeling in the most positive, romantic way, and I mean that, it's like, I really, really am so excited for this next era that we're about to embark. And that's not a referendum on what has happened in the past. This is about moving the district forward. Many of us have children in the district. Many of us have had children, or we're all taxpayers, we're all passionate. And I believe that this board picked the perfect guy to lead us in this next era. So thank you to the board. Thank you in advance. And for sure, we'll be, we'll be peppering you with questions for now. We'll celebrate a little bit. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Aldereli, too, for the position. I do not have no romantic thoughts of you.
Oh, your gut.
But I am, but I am very fond of you. I know you're gonna do great things, so I want to wish you the best of luck. And again, you do have the support of the entire board here. So best wishes, my man.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mr. Rivera. Thank you.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
I'm gonna congratulate him and, and his mother sitting here. He did a fabulous job raising him. He's an amazing leader. In interim capacity, he has started multiple programs that probably are not public yet, and I'm sure he's gonna become public, so I'm not gonna talk about it. But then expectation goes up, right, at least for me. Like, if you did that in interim, then what can you do as, as a permanent? So good luck, and as everybody said, you have full support to achieve more.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shi.
Yes, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, you want to know a leader, you put him, you know, you want to find a good captain, you won't, you put him in a storm, right? So he took over the position at the end of last year. The board was a little bit, you know, the district was a little bit chaotic. So he took over, he showed his leadership. And that's why he is the chosen one to lead our district. The board has full faith on you. So just looking for what is at A pluses for the next four and a half years.
I think my mother can attest to my grades all throughout school. Maybe not all of them were As, right, Ma? But they were pretty good. And, and you, first of all, thank you so much for your kind words, Mr. Shi. I appreciate the support. And again, I have extremely high expectations for myself, too. And, you know, you're not gonna see anybody work harder.
Thank you. Congrats, Eddie. I think this is the very well-deserved contract. Very well-deserved. I just want to thank you also for bringing up the parent academy idea to the board. It's, I think it's a great initiative. It's a, the goal is to provide a platform for parents to participate more, participate more in their child's education. To, we're gonna provide seminars, workshops, so the parents can make informed decisions. I can tell you how many times parents reach out to me, I'm sure to other board members, too, asking about curriculum questions, you know, classes, electives we offered, placement criteria, that kind of stuff. And then we, I think this parent academy is gonna help a lot in that aspect. And also, we are looking for parent leaders. So if you, any parents out there want to help in this initiative, please feel free to reach out to me, or any other board members, so we can work on this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe, any comments? No? Okay.
One more thing. Dr. Aldereli, sorry for a second question. We wanted you to celebrate, but this is the last question.
Yes.
Before the school starts. So few parents, they paid for the subscription buses, and their passes are not there in the parent portal. We know the portal is down, but they get nervous. What would be the appropriate answer that you would give them? What timeframe would their passes appear in the parent portal?
28th of August.
20th of August.
The, the bus routing assignments and bus stops will be available in the, in the portal on August 28.
All right. Thank you. You got it.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have a public, oh, Dr. Aldereli, if you want to go over some of the-
Yeah, yeah, we'll go some through over the administration report currently, maybe just some of the highlights that are currently here. The board is set to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Edison Township Vice Hockey Parents Association, which is something that we've done over the course of the last couple of years now. We have a really great partnership with them. We have our curriculum instruction pieces that we do over the summer. Our staff has been hard at work, just to make sure that our curriculum is aligned with, you know, the ever-changing standards, as well as pacing guides at the elementary level. We wanted to make sure that the curriculum was aligned with our move to trimesters in certain grade levels as well also. We have a couple field trips that this board supports as well, too. And, you know, we think we have a really good process in place from an operation standpoint, which is a coordination between building-level leadership, our athletic directors, as well as our co-curricular clubs, that'll support, you know, the hard-working people in our transportation department, to make sure that, you know, we, we get buses to field trips on time, and in, on the right day, right? Our out-of-district placements, which is, deals with our students with special needs. And we annually approve our, our nursing services plan, which we do in concert with our school doctors, as well as our school nurses, for the administrative administration of medication, as well as standing orders, how we deal with the operation of the health and safety of our students currently right now. So I think, and, and some of the things that you've seen on the agenda are professional development documentation, which is our ability to provide learning opportunities for our staff, which enhance the instructional process also. So those are really the highlights of my administrative report, so.
Thank you, Dr. Derry. I would have public comments on the resolution only?
Finance.
Ms. Conway.
John, do you have any comments on the finance? Do you want to go over some of the notes?
Yes, I do. Give me one second.
Right there. Yes, thank you. We're gonna have the ratification. I don't know if Dr.
Eli stated the ratification of the teacher's contract for the, I'm sorry, for the ETA contract for the non-certified and certified staff. So hopefully, I'll congratulate in a couple, couple minutes. Onto the rest of the financial stuff. We have the monthly reports, which are standard, a variety of contracts. One, which I want to call your attention to, is some renovation work to the tennis courts at EHS. Mr. Colibus undertook this project for milling and paving, so we'll have some nice new courts there, and some new audiovisual equipment for the JPS cafeteria, like the, the big boards, kind of like here, or in Edison Auditorium. That'll be nice for the kids. So we have some competitive contracts, some change orders, disposal of obsolete items, our usual dual-use of classrooms for FY24, award of bids, some grants, and our non-public and transportation report. And that's all.
Thank you. Now we're gonna have public comments, resolution only?
Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Boy, are we not following this agenda tonight. You gotta work on this.
We're bouncing around a little bit today.
Yeah. My question about the resolutions, and we will get a chance to come back and talk about everything later. We're just talking about resolutions now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at the curriculum guides, and my question is, under the titles, it's not stating what publisher or what program it's going to. Like, the title of math is math. The title of language arts is language arts, where it's really not showing, you know, is, is it a new program? Is it the existing program? As far as, like, for language arts, is it, is it Journeys? Is, what?
Yeah, no, for, for textbook revisions, so-
Well, no, it's, it's just a list of the recommendations of the approved curriculums.
So-
So it doesn't say what you're using, you're just using math. You know, are they new programs? Are they existing programs? The names aren't there to show us that, oh, language arts has changed, or language arts has remained the same. And it says who it's for, and it's required, but it doesn't say what it is. Or, you know, what program are you using for K5? Like, it used to be, the first thing comes to mind was, we, for language arts at the elementary level, was Journeys for K through 5. You know, is that the program that you're using for language arts? For math, it used to be, pull it out, Scotts Forstman you used for K5. So I'm just wondering, you just don't give those names because everything's staying the same? Or, you know, it's really not giving, you know, when I see the word title, I would like to see the title of the program that's being used. Is that out of line?
No, not whatsoever. I mean, I could, I could attest to this, Dr. Aldereli, that it's here. We just haven't had it posted online, all the, the curriculum guides.
Is that, is that what you're referring to, the guides for the curriculum?
Yes.
So the guides for the curriculum are labeled under the, the curriculum title, would be language arts. The textbook under that would be listed in the curriculum document itself, which is not posted online. We have, well, actually, it is posted online, but it's not posted on this agenda. Our curriculum documents and our guides and our, our scope and sequence is posted online.
So none of the-
None of, none of those, any textbook revisions would be clearly stated in a textbook revision under curriculum. So-
Okay, very good.
I think I understand the question.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That, I was just confirming-
Yeah, sure.
And I know we're just doing resolutions. I'll come back for open statements at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, oh.
Three and four trimesters, right?
Is there a comment? No? Okay. Motion to, motion to end the public comments for resolution only?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the personnel report.
Motion.
Second. That was fast. That was Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
And I, who do I have a second?
Vishal.
Oh.
He's letting me win.
I thought it was Mr. Shi. Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moeen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
He stepped out.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to approve administration, curriculum, and instruction pupil service, special service reports.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes, but I'll abstain from the ETA-related matters, please.
Okay, noted. Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moeen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes, but I have to abstain from the ETA-related matters.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion to approve finance reports.
Motion.
Second.
You lost that one. Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moeen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have committee reports, finance and facility. Mr. Jerry Shi.
All right. So Finance Facility Committee had a meeting on August 8 at, happened here at 4:00 PM. In attendance, Mr. Romano, myself, Moeen Patel, Vishal Patel, Dr. Aldereli, Mr. Toth, Ms. Becky, Bill Colibus, and Scott Murphy. On the facility topics, we had two small change orders for Hoover. The contractor removal of unforeseen concrete footings cost about $1,000, $1,700. Fiber relocation, it's about a couple thousand dollars. That's all in the finance resolution today. For capital projects, we talked about athletic fields plan. We tried to hold it off on those, the field improvements, because the, the middle schools are, have a lot of construction going on. Herbert Hoover Underground Utilities are being laid out, and the building foundations has been started. For TJ, for TJ, capa construction is currently in the process doing site work. Underground utility and foundation work will begin in the next few weeks. Woodrow Wilson Middle School, Power Pro, has scrapped the topsoil and done tree removal, and started the footings in preparation for the layout. The JP Classroom Edition Finance bid received, will be receiving the bid on August 22. Project to be bid out for five weeks on August 23. NJBOE must approve the financing in order to award the project. JP Phase 2 Edition, we tried to hold off on the detailed design for now, waiting for funding. Marshall and Edison High School, SSP, our new architect, met with the principals and administration to discuss the conceptual design. The initial design should be ready in October. We also asked administration to arrange meeting for DMR as well, due to the scope change. We'll have two designs to compare, because the DMR also did the initial design, but the scope changed a little bit. So we want to give them another chance to redesign it. So at the end, we'll compare the two, the designs and then pick one. Proposed capital projects, committee agreed to move forward to the following projects. The tennis court, Mr. Toth mentioned, and the JPM, the burner needs to be replaced. And for John Adams at Woodrow Wilson, we're converting the locker rooms into classrooms, educational spaces, not only classroom, one's a band room. So, but, you know, the contract, the bid was, came in too high, we need a rebid. But as part of the process, the other rooms are converted into other purposes. We, the committee agreed to go ahead with the acoustic, you know, panel installation. The, again, the next one's, the locker room will be, conversion will be bidded after the Labor Day. We also talked of the TJ, TJ's ramp and railings. The, the committee recommended move forward with that. It's in the best shape. Mr. Colibus also provided the 2023 capital project list to the committee. We had done a tremendous lot of work this summer. I think the total investment is, is about $4 million, not including the, the two sports fields. That's another $2.5 million on top of that. So a lot of money, we put it in to, you know, make our school look better. And I can't wait for the opening for our students to see the, you know, the enhanced schools. And a construction manager, we had in the resolution, we approved a construction manager. For contracts, the committee recommended the board to purchase Apple MacBooks, the JP Cafeteria AV equipment, including video boards and soundboard. And for IT, they're requesting a Cisco HyperFlex Storage Solutions. All of this were in the finance resolution today that was just approved. And the meeting was adjourned about 5:30, submitted by Jerry Shi. Any questions?
No, thank you. Next, we have Township Liaison Committee, Mrs. Trini White.
Okay, here we go. The Township BOE Liaison Committee was held on Tuesday, July 25, 2023, at the Education Center, beginning at 11:00 AM and ending at 12:00 noon. In attendance in person were Mayor Sam Joshi, Council Liaison Chair, AJ Patel, Councilwoman Joyce Ship Freeman, Mayor's Chief of Staff, Bob Deal, Community Constituent Relations Coordinator, Pat Coyle, Edison Police Sergeant Lisa Zaminow, Superintendent Dr. Edward Aldereli, Business Administrator Board Secretary, John Toth, Director of School Safety and Security, Pat Cassane, BOE members, Moeen Patel, Jerry Shi, and Virginia White. Via Zoom, we- Via Zoom, we had Edison Fire Chief Andy Toth, Edison Deputy Chief of Police Bob Dudash, BOE Member Beryl Patel, and Director of Communications and Policy for the BOE Heather Daniels. We began our meeting with Chief Toth, who touched on the reunification program. He also mentioned the reunification course meeting to follow up. The opportunities video is still active. We had a lengthy discussion with Deputy Chief Dudash, and many topics were discussed. The Junior Police Academy High School Program is completed, participation was good, but a little less than last year. The middle school program is still in progress and participation is very good. Crossing Guards privatization is a concern. They are attempting to select a vendor and had to go out for a rebid. Councilman Patil suggested that the Edison residents be hired first. BOE Member Beryl Patel asked the following questions and requested that they be included in these minutes. Number one, we hear from the community about crossing guards, what is the reason for privatizing? Two, what are the long-term solutions? Can the township develop a long-term solution and not privatize crossing guards and hire from Edison? Three, asking that, asking to put a clause in the contract to hire Edison residents first for crossing guards. BOE Member Mohan Patel asked if senior citizens can be asked to be crossing guards. BOE Member Jerry Shi suggested considering double coverage if posts are in close proximity and time permits. Virginia White suggested that we use the same idea that we use to recruit bus drivers. We should make the public aware of the need for crossing guards, and it should be posted on the webpage and outside our buildings wherever possible. It also helps our police department, and most importantly, it adds to the safety of our children. All of the above questions, concerns, and suggestions were discussed with Deputy Chief Dudash. Sergeant Semino brought us up to date on the progress at Woodrow Wilson Middle School and Gloria Avenue. Work is moving along and we are so pleased. signage on Gloria Avenue still needs to be done. In addition, Jackson Avenue has become a concern. The residents are very worried about the truck traffic and the traffic in general. I, along with Councilwoman Joyce Ship Freeman, did attend a neighborhood meeting and understand their concerns completely. The issue for me was the safety of our students in the morning and at dismissal. Councilwoman Joyce Ship Freeman suggested repainting the crosswalk lines and repainting the yellow curbs to begin with. Chief of Staff Bob Deal stated that the master plan is on the township website. It is still under review and is still open for suggestions. BOE Member Jerry Shi asked Mayor Joshi about the status of Stilton School, and the mayor confirmed that the BOE will not get Stilton School. Mr. Shi asked this to go on the record, and with this information, the board can move or can plan accordingly. The Talmadge and Coolidge Road, Coolidge Avenue property should be purchased by the end of the year. The application designated the property for recreational or education. BOE Member Jerry Shi also asked about 401 Division Street. The township does not object, excuse me, does not object to working with the BOE regarding this property. Details are to be determined. Respectfully submitted, Virginia White. Thank you for listening.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Beryl Patel?
Okay. So over here, one of the things, Mrs. White, it says, one of the section, BOE Member Beryl Patel asked the following questions and requested that they be included in the minutes.
Yes.
We hear from the community about crossing guards, what is the reason for privatizing? What are the long-term solutions? Can the township develop a long-term solution and not privatize crossing guards and instead hire from Edison? Asking to put a clause in the contract to hire Edison residents first for crossing guards. So, yes, I did ask those questions. The way I started that meeting, I started speaking on the Zoom call in that meeting was, I thanked Deputy Chief Dudash for all the wonderful work that Deputy Chief Dudash does. I told him I have highest respect for Chief, Deputy Chief Dudash and everyone in the police department, right? So that's what I said. But since the topic of crossing guards was going on, this is, these three points, they're essentially coming from the community. And Amari, our kid sits here, you'll probably agree to me on this, there has been enough discussion about crossing guards, and a lot of people in the community do not want to privatize crossing guards. Now, township may have their own reasons, I understand that. This was just a question, a recommendation, because we are meeting in a township liaison meeting with the township, it was a good forum to discuss, how about we hire from Edison? How about not, consider not privatizing crossing guards and know all the reasons? How about put a clause in the contract with the new company that first they should hire from Edison? There were very good responses from Sergeant Semino and Deputy Chief Dudash. Deputy Chief Dudash answered my question to my satisfaction, and it was all wonderful, so I really appreciate Deputy Chief Dudash and Sergeant Semino for answering the questions to my satisfaction, they did a wonderful job and explained everything. But I have been in this committee for two years now, last year I was not there, but I've been reading this meeting minutes, and pretty much everything is great. For example, one of the things that says, BOE, Virginia White suggested that we use the same idea that we use to recruit bus drivers. So same way, I also asked those questions. But so that my points are not excluded, because in past several times, I made very good points which are specifically helpful to the community and really care about the community, and they were not included in the meeting minutes, so I asked. So I don't think it was, there was any reason to say, BOE Member Beryl Patel requested that they be included in the minutes because there's nothing wrong you did here, but it could be taken in a wrong way by certain people and spinned across in a wrong way. So I just want to mention that over here. Thank you.
Board President, may I ask?
Yeah, Mr. Mohan Patel?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Virginia White, Ms. White. In regards to the meeting that we had, we had some, several discussions, I know I said more than what I, is written here, but one of the main takeaways from that was, we've been fighting for Stilton School for, School for almost three years. Three years back and forth, under Mr. Lanky, Mayor Lanky, we actually made some progress. And after mayor change, for two years, Mayor Joshi has been dangling this carrot in front of us in terms of, we'll do something, we'll do something. And finally, he admitted that he can't do anything for us for that school. It's a shame because that's some, that's a school property that we could have utilized for our overcrowding, which he is adding on to, and for us not to get that, that's just horrible. And I, I would remiss if they ever build any kind of townhomes or condos or apartments there, that's a shame, that would be a very big overcrowding to our schools, TJ over there, and that's, that's something I would ask all the residents to look out for. If that ever comes to plan, you know who made that happen, that was Mayor Joshi that started to overcrow our schools. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Vishal Patel?
So I see the Gloria Avenue project, do we have a deadline on when they'll be done?
It should be, as a matter of fact, I'm sorry, excuse me, Sergeant Semino contacted me yesterday when we were at, on our visit, and she told me that the letters were going out, and she is sending Dr. Alderelli a copy, and, you know, everybody else that, that is involved, these are the letters that are going out to the parents and residents. So we are, I think we're very close to completion, and it should be before the first day of school, I'm hoping. I shouldn't say that, but I think it is.
I mean, if you can do anything, because I remember asking the same question probably four months ago.
Yeah.
Saying, what's the deadline? Because at that time, March and April, the weather was getting better, because you're waiting for the weather. I mean, somebody's almost gone, so if you can please help.
Yeah, I think it's more done than not done, Dr. Alderelli.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually got word from Sergeant Semino today with regards to Gloria Avenue. Traffic pattern is complete, so right now, we're just going to vet a letter that's going to be going out to parents within the community, they're in coordination with Blevins, Ms. Blevins, who's the building principal there also. So we're looking forward to the much awaited opening of that.
We are so looking forward to this, yeah.
Before the school, hopefully?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. So the, the plan would be to inform parents of this and, and let them know, you know, obviously with the first day of school, everything's a little bit hectic, and a new traffic pattern probably adds to that piece, but we're hoping with the new communication as well as, you know, some diagrams.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, for, for me, this was an excellent project. We worked hand in hand with the town on this one and the police department, and, you know, I believe it's going to be by the first day of school, if not before. As a matter of fact, I was going to take a ride down there today, and I just didn't get the opportunity, you know, but I'm, I'm so happy for this.
Cool, no, thank you. I think it's a no-brainer, I don't know why we didn't think about it, but who would have thought about it?
I know, and, you know, and, you know, but, well, good things come to those who wait, Vishal, you know, that's true.
Absolutely, and just a comment, we, we, we looked at the letters, and we're just vetting, vetting the process in and out with everybody that's involved with that, building principal, Mr. Cassane, everybody that, that would make sure that it's going to be cohesive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more point if I could add, please?
Yeah, Mr. Mohan Patel?
I also brought up the point where we need more crossing lights. Matuchin has a ton of them all around the town, and we don't have more than two probably. So what we need to do is, we need to figure out what Matuchin is doing right, figure out how we could get the funding to get those lights here. And I don't mean putting a light in front of a stop sign maybe 10 feet away and telling you you're speeding, that doesn't help. And I brought that up to Sergeant Semino, and she did an amazing job. She went and actually looked at it, and she said, you're right, but what can I do? They already put it up, we'll fix it. But she's doing an absolute amazing job, you know, addressing some of the issues that we do have concerns for, and at least I know that someone is working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Madam President, this is my first time attending this meeting, but I'm a little bit disappointed in how the meeting summary is, is done this way. Just want to point out a thing that was not mentioned in here, this is a, a internal committee meeting, we had the meeting in the back of the, the office here, and Sam Joshi brought two armed police officers into the closed session meeting. Okay, two police officers, why? Why? This is not a public meeting, it's in a back, attendance are all administration, two, you know, three board members and their central office in the township. Two police officers, armed guard, were in the meeting. I don't know why.
Waste taxpayer money.
What is he afraid, what is he afraid of, or he's intimidating people? So we need a police, armed EPDs in committee meetings that's non-public? So I had shared this concern with, with, you know, Ginny, but we have different opinions, we agree to disagree. Mohan mentioned about the, you know, the Stilton School. We all know several hundred apartments are being built on Kilmer. That was the ideal place for a school, elementary school. We've been, went around for, for two and a half years, and I was, I was, I heard that he was not going to give it the, the property to us, so very luckily, he was at the meeting, and I was able to ask him right in front of his face, and he said, we're not going to get it. This is really, really disappointing. Two and a half years, we went back to square one, we used a lot of resources, and Mayor Lanky said he can give it to us.
Yes.
And we will take over the process to go whatever the next process is. So two and a half years, back to square one. Okay?
Waste of time, waste of taxpayers' money, waste of space.
So, you know, the, the Talmadge and Coolidge, we, we don't know what it is. I forgot to ask him the question, whereas, you know, he, he addressed in the township, state of the township address, I forgot to ask him the question, whether is there be any conditions giving that property to us? You know, if you ask me, that's not a ideal place for elementary school, but if you're going to give it, we'll, we'll, we'll make good use of it. Right across from that, that property, there are several hundred apartments, that's part of the South Plainfield. And I guarantee you, those kids is going to come into that school if we build something there. I guarantee you. 401 Division Street, I asked him that, that, you know, if he's not giving that, the Stilton property to us, that is a, a property right between the two properties, right? Is he willing to, you know, work with us on that property? I don't know, can I, can I say what we're trying to do this?
You, if you want to.
Okay.
There's no official, no action has been, been taken, so it's your idea, not the idea of committee.
So, you know, I'm, I'm just going to skip that, but, um, that, that is nice property, if the township is going to use it, if the township is going to build Stilton or whatever, he's going to need that property. I'm asking for cooperation, and didn't seem that he's very warm to that, but let's see what, what develops on that. Because I, the last thing I hate to see is apartments being built on that property. It's a .6 acre property, I don't know how many apartments he's, I think the, the builder is planning 10 apartments, that was shut down multiple times. You know, so I hope the township is going to willing to work with school district on that. You know, as far as what the next plan is, so we'll, we'll, we'll see. So, you know, I was really disappointed with the meeting that I attended, this is my first time attending this meeting, the police officers there, and the, you know, 360 on Stilton School. Thank you.
Board President?
Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, I just, my takeaway from this meeting minutes, I wasn't there, you were there. My big takeaway is that it seems like officially in this meeting with you guys there, which by the way, it's great that you have the mayor there, it's nice that he comes to this building for a committee meeting.
Publicity.
With two armed officers.
Yeah, he came here, that's, that's great that the mayor's motivated to work with us.
His own city, yeah.
And in this meeting minutes, it says, Talmadge and Coolidge property is going to be purchased, and it's going to be designated for recreation or education. So respectfully, as committee chair for facilities and finance, what I would ask you is, sooner than later, if you guys can talk about that in committee, because it seems like we're going to get the opportunity to do whatever this board, this sitting board right now, can build the framework of what could potentially be built there. You mentioned a couple of negatives about the property, where there's apartments or whatever, and they're, South Plainfield, I guess, is the residence?
Yes.
So I understand that part, but at the end of the day, if we're going to be essentially given this property, and it's a blank canvas of sorts, I think it would be up to the committee to make a recommendation to this full board to do something great with it. And I, I know that there's studies that we've had done before, maybe we should unearth them, we should talk about them in, in committee, and you could bring that to us, but I, I think that we should all be very excited that potentially this board could develop framework for that property. I mean, I don't know what we could do with it, that's what you guys decide and you bring it to us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll develop plans when we have it.
Well, I-
I don't want to put the, the cart in front of the horse.
Yeah. We actually talked about that property for three years before Sam Joshi was in the mayor's seat, and after some words come out, you got the property price going up doubling for no, no reason whatsoever. But that's besides the point, there's politics involved beside, beside that, so if he's willing to give us that property, we'll take it, hands down, no question about it, but the thing is, he's going around circles, 360 every two, two years, dangle this carrot in front of BOE so he could get support. That's not happening, we're not stupid. So if he wants to give us the property, we'll take it. If not, shut up about it. Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, just to rephrase what I said before, if you wait till the end of the year to potentially put your two cents in as to what could be done with that property, you, you just simply like, don't control the narrative with this board, right? So the nine of us are here today, and it's our job to kind of brainstorm and adopt ideas and, and thoughts, in my opinion.
Give us the property.
The more we wait, I mean, we all dedicate a lot of time, we all do. So the, most it costs us is our time of, and our brain power, it's, it's because of the studies that have already been done, it shouldn't cost us any money.
So three years, excuse me one second, three years, we've been using our brain power to attain that property, three years, he's been dangling it and not giving it to us. Let, let us decide what the Board of Education of Edison needs to put on that property? Don't dictate to us what you want to put on that property. Give us the property, let us do our job, you do your job, and that's it, that's the bottom line, that's what we're looking for.
I think we-
Don't dangle the carrot in front of us.
It sounds like we agree, it's just that I'd like to start it sooner than-
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't want our resources to be spent and being accused of putting the, the, the cart in front of the horse, because I was accused of that a couple of meetings ago. So once we have the property, if we have a, a more of a affirmative answer that the property isn't given us with no strings attached, then yes, we can work out.
Exactly. Thank you.
And I'm also looking for board members- And I also looking for board members to, to provide comments and suggestions as to how, what we're going to do with that property and we'll, we'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have transportation report, committee reports. Mr. Toth?
Joe, go ahead, buddy. I don't know. Transportation Department, we had a meeting on August 7th. John, I'm sorry. We talked about the new routing software. It's called TransFinder. And that will allow GPS systems in, in our buses. Also, we're looking for district drivers. Anybody looking for drivers? We're looking for them. We also have, we have 46 drivers. We need another 10. Anybody find a driver, we can, you know, raise your hand. Subscription busing. That was closed at, on June 30th. There was 3,223 applications of which 2,628 were eligible for busing. We need bus drivers. Anybody find some? Bus drivers, please.
That's one of the challenges, Joe.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a small one.
You say 10, I'll take five if we can get them.
Yeah, yeah, really. Okay. We have a, a, a program that's going into our buses. Now, that, that program is Zonar. And that actually gives us door to door, street to street. In other words, when the bus is driving down the street, the bus actually is told. I mean, tells the bus driver, make a right, make a left.
Yes.
To get to the stop. I mean, that's really good and we're able to follow that. There's one, one issue that, you know, I want everybody to know. That's just in our buses. That's not in all the other buses. We're transporting a little less than 12,000.
That's accurate, Mr. Romano. Yes, it is.
So I want you to understand, it's a big, it's a big process. We try to use one bus, at one bus for high school, then middle school and then elementary school. And the more efficient we get with that, it saves the district money. And making sure that we can track the buses, that's what all of this technology does. But we don't have it in the, in the out of district buses. So I want you to understand, we're doing the best we possibly can. It's a, a work in progress. It's better than, but it's going to be better than last year and we're going to continue to improve. So I appreciate your help. I appreciate your patience. Please, we need drivers. Anybody new one? Please, bus driver.
Joe, just to piggyback on what you're saying, real quick, with Zonar, I have to give credit to Mr. Gillian, our new transportation supervisor. This is, you know, an LED display in the bus will allow us to do our tree, our pre-tracking. Prior to this, we're doing pencil and paper. Prior to this, our drivers were getting, you know, directions if they had to cover a route, you know, like text to them or on a, you know, piece of paper. Now they'll get turn by turn instructions. You know, they'll also be doing their, you know, 48, 48 hour dry run prior to starting their new route packages. But at least with this, if they have to cover, the directions can go right to their LED display in their bus and give them the turn by turn. And also, you know, who's supposed to be at what stops when they're picking up, which is great. The other thing is with TransFinder, this is a newer software. We're utilizing it to build our in-house routes of which we, we anticipate having our, our routes fully completed by the, actually they have to be before the 24th PICS meeting where our drivers come in. The other benefit to this software is much like our previous software, they're going to have their own GPS tracking too. So parents will be able to see when the bus, you know, is coming near the house, whether it's, you know, it says, hey, it's five minutes away from, you know, the stop on Smith Street. But with that though, you know, it, it's going to take a little time with the rollout. I am pushing to have this in place as hard as I can for the start of school. So that parents can, you know, have the ability to see this, where the bus is in terms of on the route, so they know when it's getting near the stop. But like I said, the priority was to get the kids routed, make sure they're all being assigned to the appropriate buses, straighten out some inefficiencies over the previous years, all of which are being done. Out of the subscription busing applications eligible that we received, we're going to be able to route them all. So I got a compliment to Mr. Gillian and his staff. There's a lot of new people down there. They've done a great job. These people are working really hard and we're going to continue to work really hard. And this is, this department under Mr. Romano as the chair has, has made some really valuable changes. And I think we're all going to be very happy with what, what happens in the future.
Board President, if I could add?
Yeah, Mr. Patel.
Kudos to Mr. Romano for working with the transportation department and getting it done. And Mr. Gillian, it's a great sight to see a transportation director finally in our meetings and going to be. I know, yeah, absolutely. And I hope to see you for a few more. So whenever we have any transportation issues, which we don't plan on having since we have a transportation department that's robust now. So, thank you. Kudos.
Can I, can I add one more comment?
Yeah, Mr. Vishal Patel.
Real quick, I wanted to add to that. Parents, if you're having issues, you know, fiscal year 24 is now upon us with your busing. Incident IQ, please go through there and, and send us, you know, a message. Someone from the department will respond to you. You know, we'll try and get that addressed as soon as we can possible. I think since, I saw just a piece of information, since like July 1, we had like 96 open inquiries. Actually, there's only two left open as of today. So again, to the department, good job. I don't think it's going to be that easy in a couple more weeks, but Incident IQ, it's on our portion of the webpage. I'll be working with our Director of Communications in order to put out more information with regards to all these interesting transportation things.
And to piggyback on what Mr. Toth said as well too, we actually are providing additional support down there. About four or five secretaries and substitute secretaries to answer the phone, right? So at least this way, when calls do come in, they, they get an individual down there. So, you know, we, we, we heard the message loud and clear and we're looking forward to a smooth, a smooth opening.
Smooth as can be.
Smooth as can be. Smooth as the first day of school can be.
Thank you. I see that you're already working on the board goal of communication, right? So, so thank you for that. I was going to footstep on two things. You already covered one about, you know, having one way to report the issue, which is Incident IQ. And, and second thing, Mr. Gillian promised me that he's going to make sure that the dry run happens. Because it seems they are supposed to happen. It was not happening. And then he's, is taking it upon him to make sure drivers do the dry run before the school starts so they know their route. So.
Between the, and, and just like Mr. Patel said, that the dry run and the use of Zonar, I mean, things should be that much more efficient. We shouldn't have when standby drivers need to cover a route, them being confused as to where to go. I mean, Zonar will be a big help. I really like that we're leveraging technology. And I have to, I have to thank the, the entire transportation department along with the committee, because these are the guys that put this stuff into place.
Yep. So, so last year this time I was a parent and, and when, when I face an issue, I feel like I'm from IT department. We do dry run before we go to production. And when I turned to the meeting, Mr. Gillian goes like, we are going to dry run. I said, Allah, you got the right guy on the job. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Yeah, just want to, you know, dry word actually was in the contract, somehow they were not following it. So just have kudos to Dr. Alderelli. We have increased staff in that department anticipating the, the core volume that's coming in. But we do encourage parents go, you know, file their issues through the one-way communication, which is parent help desk. And Mr. Gillian has promised me that, and not me, the whole committee, that they're going to man the, the help desk to, to answer those, those requests. I'm, I'm looking forward to the Zoner application, which, which John mentioned. Basically you can just shoot a, a route to a, any bus driver who's not familiar with that route. And it'll give you turn by turn directions. And the other thing, we, we did push the, our transportation department to get the, the application on a phone quicker than what was, they want to do. So let's see how quickly they can, we can get this app, Stop Finder, right?
Stop Finder. Yeah, we, we're definitely, as Mr. Shi said, we, we're definitely pushing. I mean, I'm a parent myself, so I know how important this is to know, you know, when the bus is coming. Because for planning in general for parents, I mean, I have small kids. We'll do whatever we can to get this thing pushed. But we want to make sure that it, it's, you know, when we put it out, it, it, it's, it's working correctly and we put out the right information. We're going to, you know, communicate it on the web, instructions, maybe do some instructional videos, how they can download the app. Make it as easy for parents as possible.
Board President?
Yeah, Mr. Patel.
So, Joe, I see over here that you wrote in your minutes, school process assignments and bus stops will be available in the portal on August 28th. So thank you so much for doing that. I actually did not get a chance to read any of the meeting minutes. So if I would have read this, wrote this before, would have not asked that question that I asked you earlier.
It's okay. And Joe, Joe's on top. Mr. Romano's on top.
That, that being said, looks very promising, everything that you said. So we look forward to it. Thank you so much, Dr. Alderelli and Mr. Toth for a wonderful job. And Joe, we will, I'll also spread the message out, more drivers. Thank you.
You could also get a CDL license in, you know, China.
Thank you. I, I just have a few announcement for meetings, next meetings, caucus meeting Thursday, September 14th, 2023 at, at Center at 7:00 PM. The next public meeting is Tuesday, September 19th at JP Stevens at 7:00 PM. We're going to have public comments right now. Mr. Matt?
Matt Ravnak, ETA Vice President. Unfortunately, Mr. Bowden couldn't be here, but as the Vice President, co-chair with him of our negotiating team, I just wanted to thank the board's negotiating team, Mr. Shi as the Chair and his other members, Mr. Romano, Mr. Mohan and Mr. Vishal Patel. You know, it's a long process to get a contract. We spent a lot of evenings together. But we got to the finish line and that's important. We ourselves start back in probably about a year prior, serving our people. I know the board gets involved or the administration when we ask for scattergrams in November to be able to cross things out. And then from there, you know, we started, I guess, in March, we sent Ms. Peng a email letter asking, you know, when we can get started, a committee, et cetera. So getting to the finish line is a great thing. I know the teachers themselves and, and staff will be happy. There's nothing worse than starting a school year without a contract. So I'm sure I know I've gotten some texts over the last day or two about it. You know, of course, everybody wants to see what's there. That'll happen eventually. But I do want to thank you guys for the time you put in as well. And again, helping us cooperatively to get to that finish line. I also especially want to thank Dr. Alderelli again and Mr. Toth. And also actually Dr. Tui, I think he just slipped out of the room, who are also very instrumental. I know Mr. Shi a number of times allowed me and Mr. Bowden to meet with Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth and, and Dr. Tui with the special ed needs separately. And then they would go back to the committee, I guess, and share it with them and we would do it with ours. So that's a good way of working on more of a day-to-day basis. You know, I'm not going to disclose anything about the settlement, but I think both sides will be happy with it. I think it's something that everyone can live with. And I want to just add something. I walked in with someone today that says, was it a win for you guys? There's no such thing as a winner loss. I learned this very, this is my sixth or seventh contract for both certificated, non-certificated. And I learned very early in the process, you'll walk away happy with some things and not happy with other things. And that makes a good negotiation. You're never going to get everything you want. But hopefully you can both walk away and for the next couple of years say, you know what, we did okay, both sides, the community, the students and everyone, all the stakeholders involved. And I really do believe this contract does that. I also wanted for the people at home, our members, ETA members, we have 1,600 members that have to ratify this as well. And one of the questions that has come up to us is, this is an oddity, the board's voting on it first. Yeah, it doesn't have to be the other way around. Obviously time was an issue. We just signed a memorandum agreement yesterday. The board meeting was today. Our 1,600 members, we have a constitution and bylaws to follow. We have a procedure we have to follow. Additionally, especially for those people that work like summer school, extended school year, et cetera. We know we have a lot of people over the next week or two traveling, including myself. I'm leaving Thursday on vacation finally. So, you know, it's not a rush. We will get it done. You know, be patient. Information will be coming out and follow. But again, I do want to thank you for the, the process and again, getting to the agreement that we have. The other one I want to mention with the settlement agreement in administration letter A, that's actually, I'm not getting into details, but I also want to thank Dr. Alderelli and actually the board attorney, Mr. Mensch. Working cooperatively and dialogue brought us to a settlement there as well. And it just shows what can happen when you have people that are willing to sit together and work things out. And I hope moving forward, I'm confident moving forward, Dr. Alderelli, by the way, congratulations again.
Thank you.
You've worked great with us over the last couple of years, actually, as HR Director, interim superintendent. And we expect that our relationship will continue to grow and work cooperatively for the best of everyone involved in the district. Finally, there's a couple of things that came up today I didn't intend to talk about, but one of the things was Beryl mentioned, Beryl Patel earlier. And that was about the ratings of the schools and all. And some of the things that were said were absolutely on target. You know, let me attribute it this way. When if you're a person that's overweight and goes on a diet, the first 10 pounds are easy to lose. Then it becomes more difficult. Okay? I had the discussion with superintendent 20 plus years ago. We had the highest SAT scores in math in the county and among the top in the state. And he's like, okay, what are we going to do and improve it? I says, you don't understand how tough that is now. Because when you're here to get to that next level, it's tough. And yes, we will all work hard to get our students to achieve more. I'm sure the students will put the time and effort in and some of the programs, by the way, you're talking about, I think are great. But I just want to make you realize that, that yeah, it's not always about the numbers. Statistics can be skewed any way you want to skew, skew them as a math person. I can guarantee that. But, you know, we do have great schools and I'm glad many of you acknowledge that. And yes, the pandemic was one thing, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get through it. We'll get over it. We'll, we'll, those numbers will go up. The other thing with this parent academy, it made me think of something with my children. In adolescent going into teenage years, the principal of the school did his PhD thesis on the transition, like emotionally back then. And it was open to any parent. And it was the one of the most wonderful things I ever attended. It made me understand why my kids were acting the way they were, why they were changing and different. It's not that they were tuning us out. They had their mind elsewhere because of they're growing up now. Their friends became different, et cetera. So I can see something like that as well as coming into play. I think that's also a good move. Finally, with the busing, it sounds like you guys did a great job. I drove a bus for 10 years in a summer. When I retire.
That's in the contract. You know, not for nothing, like, you know, not for nothing, you could start at like 5:45 in the morning and we can.
I'm at JPF 5:45.
And to be perfectly honest, we could get, Doug, I can get a bus over there. If you want. I mean, really, I could do that. I can make that happen.
I, I got to say though, what, what Mr. Toth said is absolutely right. When you have to cover a run and you have no idea where you're going, that sounds like a great system. I'm actually thinking when I retire, I may get my bus driver's license back.
You're hired.
Anyway, again, thank you so much. And for everyone, by the way, happy Independence Day to those of you apply here and at home. And to everybody, enjoy the last couple of weeks of summer before we open a school year and hopefully it'll be a great opening in a school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, echo what, you know, Matt said. I'd like to thank the committee, Mr. Romano, Mohan and Vishal. Hours and hours, we spent hours and hours in this negotiation. And I also like to thank the ETA. We have four of the negotiation committee members here. I hope, you know, you can have a quick ratification and hope everyone will be happy. The details, because it's not ratified, I, I can't talk too much about it, but once they're, they're done, we can talk a little bit about it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Joyce.
I was going to say good evening, but it's like it's almost 10 o'clock.
Well, we have this jazz program from, starting off with Edison, from September 28th to October 1st. And when we were getting together, people from each town to form our committee, they were all raving about Edison's music, that they wanted the students to be showcased from Edison. They kept telling me over and over again, no, we want, you know, before I even got the other group, we want the jazz ensemble from Edison. And I know from going to another concert, I think at St. Matthew's School or something, that it was outstanding. I mean, it's always, Edison is always outstanding, you know. And I'm a little partial to JP Stevens, so forgive me on that. But also, and then, as they were talking about and everything, I said, you know, I'm an independent thinker. I'm not a politician. So when they were talking about the school, the Stilton School and all that, I know for a fact that we had talked about that. Till I got nauseous from talking about it. We kept talking about it over and over again, about it being on the Rossi, and about that information given, you know, we were all trying to get that. Because in reality, everybody on this board has to agree with me that we are overdeveloped in this town. Anybody who's not agreeing with me, I don't know where they live. Okay? I'm the girl that used to pick blackberries, okay, on the other side of Edison. So you know, I've been here for a while.
No more blackberries.
No more blackberries at all. My grandfather used to hunt with that little jacket on, even though I'm not into hunting. You know, he had two daughters, so he didn't even pass it on. But with that information, but I, I myself wish that the school and the council could work together to make a better Edison. You know, the problem that I have is, people get into personalities rather than the business that we all need to do to move our town forward. We need to take and, yeah, put this little ego over here, okay? And let's move it along and let's do better. All right? Because we have to do something. We have to do something about that. I call it overbuild, overkill. Okay? Because the flooding condition, all the conditions that can harm us, because you know, those school buses are gonna have to go through the floods. All right? So we need to take a more proactive way in stopping some of this overbuild, overkill. And any area that we could get, even like this Stilton School, we get for, because the amount of apartments and amount of children that you get, I'm talking, I put my educator hat on for me teaching in the school system. I've been at the places where there's over, over the amount of people in the room. And it's not fair. It's not fair to stick a teacher with 30 kids. Because I guarantee you, five of them are not gonna get it. They're not gonna get it. So that's not even fair for us to keep on with what we're doing and over and over and over again. It's not fair. And I'm glad they like your contract too, sir, the way you guys negotiate. Because I'm, you know, I'm pro-union for the union. And so, you know, that was a part of people working together for a common cause. Now, if we can just get that in this town, and get people to sit down at the table together, and stop putting article, you know, putting defenders up between us, you know, I know people that's complaining, they're saying about, you know, you're having police guards and all that information going on. We need to relax all that too. We needed, we just need to be better people, you know, that we can sit down, that we don't have to have all these people. Because, you know, actually, I'm a councilwoman. And well, I'm gonna drop to serious for a minute. Yeah, the woman got shot in Saraville. That's, you know, I don't get to have a police guard. I don't get to have a police person with me all the time, you know. So you gotta think about things, and you gotta think about cost. And what is it gonna cost us as Edison people? How much can we spend? How much can we, you know, spend? Because we keep building more and more and making these massive schools. They're like campuses almost, you know. Because you did keep adding on and keep adding on. So what do we do? We now put another apartment building up somewhere? Because I was at the meeting last, what was it? Last night, I was at the meeting. And they were complaining about the amount of apartments that's gonna be put on their street. And the street is only this wide. You know, I don't know why, but we didn't build these streets in Edison for overbuild. Now, you try going from Grove Avenue, from Mettletown going down to Inman Avenue, they're taking like forever, because you got two lanes. You're not going anyplace else. You're taking, you're going down those two lanes, down the street, back and forth. I don't know. I just, you know. And Happy Independence Day, you know, because independence and freedom means a lot to people when they don't have it. They don't realize it. If you always had freedom and you always had independence, you don't understand the whole feeling of it. But, you know, congratulations. Thanks a lot. I'm finished. And I want everyone, please, please participate and let everybody know that we have class, and we like jazz, and we like a lot of good things in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Ms. Freeman, on Avenue C, you can get all the blackberries you want. Right there on, right there.
All right. Mr. Romano, Board Vice President, how about us playing chicken, getting out in the street, because the trucks is blocking that from Avenue C over here? Can you help me out with that, sir?
To be perfectly honest, you know, I'm just gonna put it out there. Main Street, when it first was designed, was 25 feet over. If you look at the bridge that the turnpike put in, when the turnpike came through, the road was actually 25 feet to the other side. If you look at the deli, the deli, the curbing on the deli, according to the county, that road went in front of the deli, where people are parking. And I've tried to work as a committee person. And so, as a councilperson, if you'd like to sit and talk, I show you about, if you look at the fog lines on that road, you'll see that the fog lines actually go in front of the deli, and the people are parking on the real street.
Basically, what he's trying to say is he's gonna buy you some blackberries.
Any other, oh, Mr. Ross.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, everybody. First, am I wearing my hat as the President of the EPSA? I wanna congratulate Dr. Alderelli. Mom, well done. Bravo. We all know that a great child is a great blessing to us as parents. And, you know, we're really happy that Dr. Alderelli is gonna be making that move. And we look forward to working together with him from our unit. Also, congratulations to the ETEA and the board for completing their negotiations. It's all the unions in this district, whether it's the certified, non-certified, whether it's the custodian unions, whether it's the principals, whether it's the exempt employees here at 312, the Board of Ed. That's what makes the Edison education great. And all the things that you look, we all know that New Jersey has some of the best education in the country. When you look at the numbers and you look at the data, and anybody that knows anything knows that some of the best education in New Jersey takes place right here in Edison Township. So that's me at EPSA. But now, since Joyce got up to represent her alma mater, and perhaps as a, you know, carpetbagger, starting my 14th year as the Principal of Edison High School, thank you for that honor. And I just wanna say that we've got a couple of great events coming out. And we talked about community, so I'm gonna be nice, and saying that we're gonna have a wonderful football game on September 1st. It's gonna be hosted by JP Stevens at September 1st, Friday at 5:00 PM. All right? So everybody to come out. It's a great time. Now, we do, we used to do these games at the end of the year. Now we do them to kickoff the year. And I know that they've got some good numbers at JP. And we're coming back from, I think we had a Group V Central Jersey State Championship, the first one since 1991.
Stop bragging, Ray.
Great job, Selvin, and Little Yasko, and Bayo, and everybody else, and Bueno, and everybody on the line. So great job for that state championship. But we're gonna be having that game, and that's a kickoff. And talk about great community events. It's always great to see some of the old guard come back out, and the kids, you know, sneak back from before they go to college to watch that game. It's always a wonderful time. And another great time of coming together, and gee, if I dare say, more state champions, the Edison High Band on Saturday, September 9th, is hosting their band show. And JP always performs last, because they have, you know, the biggest band in the township, and they've got the new band director. So it's gonna be a wonderful show, where you can see the, oh, wait, state and national championship Edison High Band, that's September 9th. So come out to these great community events after you go see the jazz. That's gonna be an all-day affair starting about 2:00 PM. Thanks, everybody.
Board President?
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Dr. Ross, I wanna thank you so much. You're here at 10 o'clock in a summer Tuesday night, or Wednesday, what day?
Tuesday.
Tuesday night, selling your high school, our high school, the way you do, not selling, only in terms of advertising. Kudos to you. Thank you so much for doing what you do. You're amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Ross? You know, we're in the process of trying to paint the building at Edison High. So you have the task to pick a color.
No. That's a no.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, very good.
But you did say the Edison versus JP Football on September 1st will be on a brand-new JP Stevens field.
Ms. Colley.
I'm still gonna give you my name and address. Nobody else does. Elizabeth Conway, 20 in other words circle. I know. Follow rules. Number one, as a former teacher, I was delighted to hear that the contract with the teachers, both certified and non-certified, is going forward. And hopefully, the teachers will be just as happy and vote positively as the board did. So I'm glad about that. Number two, I'm really glad about Dr. Alderelli's contract. I'm dying to know what it is, but, you know, and I wanna make sure that you got what you, that you didn't settle for what you did the last time. I warned you. So. You didn't pay them enough initially.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, you did, hopefully, you did better. Because all along, I have been one of your fans. So congratulations, and I look forward to talking to you and texting you and complaining to you for the next, I don't know how many years. So that's very good.
Four years, 10 months, and 15 days.
Oh, good. Very good. Thanks, Joe. Number two is regarding the busing issue. Everything seems really wonderful, but this is only for the Edison Board of Education buses. And my question is, what is the percentage of Edison Board of Education buses versus the general population of buses? Because the parents have to understand, wow, my bus is gonna be do this. And then all of a sudden, a DAPR bus will pull up, and it will not have those functions. So the parents have to understand that. So do you know the percentage of Edison buses?
I would say it goes by routes. I'd say it's probably 40, 60. Meaning that 40% are routes run by our buses. The rest are, you know, out with a contracted vendor. So, you know, we don't have the ability to dictate, you know, them putting GPS.
At this point in time?
No, not at this time. Right. And, you know, as soon as we do, there's gonna be a cost that I'm sure is gonna come with that, right?
Correct.
But yes, we're gonna put out all that information.
Very good.
We need drivers.
I'd say something, but I'm gonna hold back. And my last item, my monthly item, and you know exactly what I'm saying, Dr. Alderelli. Again, I looked to the agenda this afternoon, and I looked to my hard copy of the agenda, and I'm still not seeing the minutes of your committee meetings. Now, I'm not asking, and I'm sure the general population is not asking for verbatim as to who said what and where and when, but an overview of what took place, what was discussed, if anything was gonna be brought to the board, so that this way we can know what's going on. Because when each board member gets up to give their minutes, you know, it's just rattling through and, you know, you're trying to pay attention, but at the same time, you're not being able to ask questions. And I never thought I'd say this, but Jerry, I really appreciate on Facebook, you're giving us a weekly update of what's going on with construction, which I was pleasantly pleased with. Didn't realize I'd ever say that. But. But I don't know how to say this, but.
Message received. Message received.
And I thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colley. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. Any other comments?
No, second timer. Second timer. First time.
Carol.
Carol Podolsky, 39 Jonathan Drive. I will be brief. I am here tonight to see Dr. Alderelli, appointed, elected, whatever, as our Superintendent of Schools. I've been waiting for this minute since the first time I met him in his Zoom interview. Thank you for all you've done for us so far, and I look forward to a whole lot more.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Podolsky. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
This just, this just in, the football game got moved up to August 31st. It's a Thursday night, so we got a little Thursday night football. So again, 5:00 at the home of the Hawks at JP Stevens, 5:00 on the 31st of August. Sorry about that mix-up.
So, so the folks, the folks at home, August 31st, make sure you're at JP Stevens Stadium to witness the game. Go out there and support our students. Thank you.
Go Hawk or go?
Thank you.
Go both. Go Birds. Go Birds. Go Birds.
Okay. More comments, public comments? See now, motion to end public comments?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion towards you're in the meeting?
Motion.
Everybody can't wait to leave. All right.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. See you next meeting.
Thank you.